Yeah.
I was worried there for a minute, I thought I might have to go back home.
Lord, we just come to you tonight asking for your guidance as we make decisions, Lord. And, Lord, I just would like to pray for the leadership of our country, Lord, as we enter a new phase. Lord, I just want to pray for those that are sick or have sick one, sick loved ones right now. Lord, just comfort them, give the doctors and nurses and frontline workers the patience and knowledge to treat them. Asking your name, amen.
Amen.
City council meeting for the month of January two thousand twenty-one, please come to order. Will you please silence your cell phones? Melissa, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of the citizens of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nancy, will you please call roll?
Chris Foster?
Here.
Sharon Williams?
Here.
Louis Short?
Here.
Casey Griffin?
Here.
Rebecca Prince?
Here.
Ally Sugg?
Here.
Melissa Cho? Paul Muse?
Here.
Press? Terry Hine?
Here.
Let's record show that we have a call. Next item on the agenda is waive the reading and approve the minutes as presented from the December seventeenth city council meeting. Do we have a motion?
Sub move.
Second. Nancy?
Paul Muse?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Next item is the approval of the payments journal for December of two thousand twenty. Do we have a motion? Make a motion to approve.
Second. Melissa Cho? Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Paul Muse?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item is the approval of the street sanitation, general, community center O and M and miscellaneous funds for the month of December two thousand twenty. Do we have a motion?
Sub move.
Second.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Paul Muse?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item, you have the supervisor reports in your packets. Mayor, we have the supervisor report in our package from the police department. I don't have any other reports from any other department.
Should have scanned in, I was having so much trouble with the scanner that they, they all turned them in, I can get your copies of them. I can send them out again.
It'd be nice to have them late. What was the, I didn't hear.
He said he did not get the, none of the.
The only, the only department report we got was from the police department. We didn't get one from anybody else.
That's the one that came in late, the other ones, when I was scanning everything in.
Yeah.
I had to have lots of trouble with the scanner, we kept skipping and stopping and getting jammed, so that was my problem.
I have copies, because I called Lisa and they were there, they're around three, they're, I'm not getting, if you want, I'll get them.
I'll send them out, I'll scan them again.
Anybody else not get the report?
None of them. They all did.
Nobody got one. You did?
I called Lisa, because I only saw one, so I called her now.
Okay.
Scan it. Go on.
Well.
Tag them up next month, I mean, we can just go on.
Yeah.
Unless there's, you want to ask any of you here?
Y'all want to, I think our supervisors probably could.
They could give us a report.
Do you want to look at it?
Could give you a report, just, no, I'd rather they just be emailed so we could have them.
And approve them next month.
They don't get approved, they just.
Okay. No, they're, they're only for comment and questions anyway, they're, right, so, but I'd like to see them if it's possible. Okay. Okay. Unfinished business? We have a, a bond decision or discussion, and I would like to, again, bring up the great opportunity that we have to, to have a great opportunity to refinance the, the bond and to, to have the opportunity to continue to, we have nine different projects that, that are very, very, I think instrumental of the growth of our, our future. It's, like I said, we, we have the fi, we have five, or nine different projects that are part of the, the, of the, of the refinance, and we've got, like I said, we've got such a great chance to bring ourselves up to forty, to, oh, at least, to have thirty, geez, to have, we have such a great opportunity to, to, to bring in Heber Springs and to, to at least thirty to, to forty, to, to bring in the, to have us to, to have forty thing, excuse me. Huh? Yeah, it is, okay. What we have, we have, we have a great, I feel, great athlete, gosh. Huh? I don't know if I am.
Let's take a break.
Yeah, let's take, let's take, just take them out, take them, take them out.
Where did Shane go?
I think the first thing we need to entertain is the council's approval of my filling in for Mayor Clark in his absence.
I can't hear you.
Make a motion to allow Terry to fill in for Mayor Clark this evening.
Seconded.
Okay. Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Paul Muse?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
All right, thank you, the first thing I want to say is our thoughts and prayers are with the mayor and his family right now. Hope that he comes back healthy and strong, I think we all have the same feelings for that, he's done a wonderful job for the city and for us. So keep him in your prayers. We were down to the bond, any discussion? I was not at the last two city council meetings due to having a date with Rona, so if anybody wants to discuss anything about the bond, I think now would be a good time to talk about it, if not, we'll move on. Anybody? I think the mayor was leaning into encouraging the support of the proposed ballot in order to move our city forward and be able to grow, and I think it'd be a tremendous asset to this city and to all the citizens. All right, the next item of business is the lease of the two thousand twenty-one Mack dump truck. Scott, do you want to say anything about that?
I was just going to say, in the media's November brought to that we were going to be looking at purchasing one, all brought up, maybe checking into renting for me. I did that, I couldn't.
Hello?
I couldn't.
Just talking.
I couldn't find anything to rent anywhere, so I started looking in the leasing, and Tri-State was the one that we came up for leasing. I had another company out of Kansas, but they were about almost double the price, so, and this company is right out of Little Rock. So that's, I chose Tri-State Trucking.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the mayor into the lease with Tri-State Truck Center, the one we have here on our package.
Let me, Paul, if you don't mind, let me add to that, there's one paragraph in that lease that talks about indemnification by the city, and I've talked with Scott about it, he's talked with them about it, and we feel confident that they will modify the generic lease agreement.
That we can identify that.
But I would encourage the council to make that a condition at this point in time of signing the lease that they do agree to modify the indemnification agreement to limit it to no more than our limits of liability, insurance liability, so we have no personal indemnification.
Amend my motion that we approve, that we allow the mayor to enter into this agreement, subject to those stipulations.
Short? Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Paul Muse?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
All right, that's approved. Next item on the agenda is the certification of the election results for two thousand twenty. I've got a rare. You got that? And I'll remind the council from the short time I was the county clerk that this is a formality, we just have to approve the results of the election. I make a motion these results be approved and certified.
Seconded. Paul Muse?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
You can do the welcome. Next item on the agenda is to welcome our new members to the council, Melissa Cho, Rebecca Prince. We're excited to have both of you guys on board, look forward to good times for the city. You bring a lot of talent and thoughts and ideas to the council, and we look forward to that.
I'm glad to be here.
All right, next item, we're required by law to pass a resolution each year for the procedures of the council meetings. It appears it's the same as the one we've had in the past, I don't believe there's any changes, I'll need someone to. I'll introduce that. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash zero zero one, a resolution establishing procedures for the conduct of meetings of the Heber Springs City Council, whereas Arkansas Code annotated thirteen forty-three five one A one C requires that the governing body of the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas, determines the rules of its proceedings during the first meeting in January, now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas. Section one, regular monthly meetings of the city council of the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas, shall be held at the Heber Springs Community Center on Bobby Jean Lane, Heber Springs, Arkansas. However, nothing shall preclude the relocation of meetings, regular or special, to an alternative location, to an alternate location. Notice shall be given to the public at least seven days in advance of a scheduled relocation. All meetings of the city council, regular or special, shall be recorded in accordance with Arkansas Code twenty-five nineteen one oh six. Section two, regular meetings of the Heber Springs City Council will be held the third Thursday of each month beginning at six P.M. Special meeting times and locations will be posted on the bulletin board in the Heber Springs City Hall and as otherwise required. Section three, an agenda shall be prepared, prepared by the Heber Springs City Clerk for every regular and special meeting of the city council. The agenda shall contain any item of business that any member of the Heber Springs City Council or mayor presents for inclusion on the agenda. Financial information will be submitted by the city treasurer to the city clerk for inclusion on the agenda. Any item to be, any item of business to be included will be submitted with a brief written explanation for the required consideration to the city clerk no later than four P.M. on the Wednesday prior to the regular meeting date. Agendas for special meetings will be paired with the consideration of the requirement for public notice. Agenda shall be delivered by mail or other means to members of the city council, mayor, and press no later than seven days prior to the meeting date. Section four, notwithstanding the foregoing subsection of this resolution, the city council may, by a majority vote of the members present, elect to place any matter before the city council for consideration at that meeting. Section five, the city clerk shall place any item of business to be before the members of the Heber Springs City Council on the agenda under the appropriate category according to the following order of business. Items under new business which are not resolved are again to be placed under old business until resolution. A, call to order, B, pledge of allegiance, C, roll call, D, motion to waive the readings of the minutes and approval of minutes, E, approval of payments, F, financial statements, G, supervisor reports, H, old business, I, new business, J, open mic, K, announcements, L, adjournment. Section six, the mayor with the majority approval of the city council may allow citizen or public comment on any item of business on the agenda. Section seven, any ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section eight, that the provisions of this resolution are hereby declared to be severable, and if any section, phrase, or provision shall be declared to be held invalid, such invalidity shall not affect the remainder of the sections, phrases, or provisions. Any discussion? We need a second, don't we? I move that we adopt this resolution.
I'll second.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Melissa Cho? Paul Muse?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is the state of the city, I'm going to pass that off to let Mayor Clark present that at the next meeting. Next item is the two thousand twenty-one contract for Brattleville Falls. Someone would like to. You just need approval. Yeah, exactly. I'll, I'll make a motion that we allow the mayor to enter into this agreement with the YBMC for the lease of Brattleville Falls. By the way, that's five hundred, it's fifteen hundred dollars, it's, well, we agreed to use it and take care of it, basically, and we spend a little money up there. We pay them five hundred dollars a year for a lease on it. I make that motion to allow them to enter into that lease. Motion second, any discussion?
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Paul Muse?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
The next item is the two thousand twenty-one contract for disabled American veterans, it was in your packet. Someone want to? Come on.
I make a motion we approve contract.
Second.
Have a motion as second, any discussion? Nancy?
Melissa Cho? Paul Muse?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
The next item is the two thousand twenty-one contract for Cleveland County Aging Program, and I believe we probably need to read this in its entirety because it consists of twenty-five thousand dollars. If someone would like to read that. I'm on a roll. There you go. Agreement, whereas the city council of the city of Heber Springs has been reviewing its ordinances with regard to the needs of senior citizens with this, within this community, and whereas the city council has determined that it is necessary to provide for services to assist senior citizens within this community, and such ought to be done on a non-discriminatory basis based on, based on eligibility of the citizen, and whereas the Cleveland County Aging Program Incorporated and the Arkansas nonprofit organization is prepared to perform such service in that they desire to assist the cities in efforts. Now therefore, the parties heretofore agree as follows. Section one, that the city of Heber Springs shall pay to Cleveland County Aging Program Incorporated the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars and no cents for services to benefit senior citizens within the city. Section two, the purpose of this contract is to provide funding for the Cleveland County Aging Program Incorporated, also known as CCAP. CCAP provides home-delivered and congregate meals for senior citizens, senior citizens in Cleveland County and the citizens of Heber Springs. The city agrees to provide limited funds for the food, drink consumption by senior adults for the year two thousand twenty-one. The request for funding will be twenty-five thousand dollars payable in four installments beginning March thirty-first, June thirtieth, September thirtieth, and December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. We must have original invoices for product along with the number of delivered meals and served meals on site. Section three, that while the Cleveland County Aging Program Incorporated is intended to assist those mostly in need, eligibility is determined by age, and thus, services shall be provided to citizens of the city of Heber Springs who are sixty years of age and older on a non-discriminatory basis without regard to race, religion, income, or social status. Section four, in consideration of services herein described, the city agrees to pay the Cleveland County Aging Program Incorporated the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars and no cents. Section five, the period of this contract shall be from the date of its execution through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, and shall be binding on the successors and assigns of both parties heretofore. Section six, that neither party shall be able to assign their interests in such contract without the prior written consent of the other. Section seven, it is further agreed and understood between the parties heretofore that this contract shall be canceled by the city if the necessary funds to be expended by the city in furtherance of this contract are not available to the city and cannot be appropriated by the city council for purposes of its annual budget. In the event of such concurrent occurrence, this contract shall become null and void. Section eight, this contract shall be construed and enforced according to the laws of the state of Arkansas. I make a motion we allow the mayor to enter into this agreement.
Seconded.
Have a motion second, any discussion? This is a terrific program, everybody knows it, and I wish we could give them more.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Paul Muse?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
All right, it's approved. Next item is the two thousand twenty-one contract for Sugarloaf Heritage Council. Paul, you're on a roll. You're going to make me read this one too? I don't think you have to read this. No, this was, this is only twenty-five hundred, we don't have to read this one. Yeah, we just need. I make a motion that we allow the mayor to enter into this contract also. Got a motion second, any discussion? Nancy?
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Paul Muse?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Contract's approved. Next item of business is a two thousand twenty-one contract for the Humane Society. I think we definitely need them, don't we?
I'll make a motion, their contract with Humane Society. Second.
Have a motion second, any discussion?
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Melissa Cho? Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Paul Muse?
Yes.
Contract's approved. The next item, the burn ordinance is being tabled for this meeting, will be just brought up, probably on next month's agenda. The final item under new business is an encroachment of seven oh eight West Pine Street, you want to talk about that, Doug?
The house is up for sale, they're trying to close on it, there's not much in the setback, but this is just like every other setback letter we've done, and GPS is located in here, and it's placed the structure inside of the setback, so they're just asking for the letter of acknowledgement.
It's both the residence and the garage, am I looking at that right?
I believe so.
And any new construction must meet zoning setback requirements?
Yeah, if it's ever vac, if it's ever vacated, it's got to be brought back up the code.
Make a motion we issue the encroachment acknowledgement letter.
Second.
Have a motion second, any discussion?
Chairman?
Yes.
Can we designate whoever signs that, because they need that for tomorrow for closing, since the mayor is incapacitated at the moment?
Can you sign that tonight? I can sign it. I can certainly sign it.
I can attest it.
We can sign it, attest it, I think, I'll just put, I don't even know what my title would be. I'm sure several people have got titles for me, but. Well.
I always want to have an ordinance that reads something from the mayor in case something like this happens that someone kind of steps in.
The county does. I mean. Well, the law provides. Designation of succession. It's in the code section. Right. And you did what you did, you elected somebody, so we did what we're, we did what we're supposed to do.
So you're the mayor?
But I don't know that I'm the mayor. No. That's what I'm saying. I'm in charge of the meeting, I'm, I'm the, you know, a person, chairman, I'm chairman of the meeting, I guess. But I don't mind signing it as. Acting. Acting mayor, I'm not even acting mayor. Pardon, pardon me? Yeah, I don't think it matters to them, let's change. I don't think it'll matter to them, I just don't think we need mayor after my name, that's what I'm saying. I think it needs to say city attorney. Let's do that. That'd be all right, Doug, he just signs it as city attorney?
That's fine, as long as, I just, we just don't want anything to come back on it, so I just need it in the minutes. On it, so I just need it in the minutes.
Here's, here's what I'm going to ask you to do, Lisa. You can send it to me with that, nothing underneath it, and I'll put in what needs to go underneath it. Exactly what I title is for this meeting. I'm sorry, I can't give it to you right now, and then I'll get it signed.
I'll do it first, then you'll write.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right. And then I'll get it to you, Doug, or.
Yes.
Somebody. All right. Did we vote on that?
No.
No, not yet.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Paul Muse?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Louis Short?
All right. The next item on the agenda is open mic. Yes, ma'am.
Can I get an update, clarification of what's happening with the leaves and the limbs? Are they going to be picked up and burned?
Scott, can you address that?
Monday, they're doing the, starting to go into this, going through the refinement. I don't know anything yet for that, for a while, but we are going to do it by time.
Is that leaves, dead limbs?
Yes, ma'am.
And then council will decide what's going to happen after?
Yes, yes, we're still, we're still here on the beat here. We're trying to come up with a plan.
Okay.
Let's go forward.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anybody have any announcements? All right, I would like to say, express my appreciation to Paul for being my, being my co-pilot. No one has anything else? This meeting will be adjourned.